Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Athens Select Board Meeting.
No decisions. We made an executive session. Are there any motions?
Yeah, hold on, I'm writing it.
Sorry, David.
Okay.
Oh, I did sign it.
Oh, you did? Oh, sorry, David did sign it.
Okay, so the first motion out of the executive session is I make a motion that in order for the select board to consider taking action on a complaint against a town employee or appointed official, that complaint must be in writing, signed, and submitted to the select board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
The phones and paper too.
All right. Is there another motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we hire attorney for a legal matter that the select board needs to look into.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Sandy was going to...
Yeah, because we discussed it.
We were going to... I'll make a motion that Sandy prepare a notice for the town, for the select board indicating confidence in our town employee and our employees of the past.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will move on to public comment.
Okay, um, David, I just wonder if you might want to let our guests from Wyndham Regional and Green Mountain Power move up since they've been...
Freezing outside?
Freezing outside.
Waiting.
That's never good. Let's do public comment and then we will do that, we will do Wyndham Regional if you're good with that. Is that all right? We will do, let's do public comment. And three minutes, let's try and keep it down to that.
You should start on this side, it messes, it mixes things up.
All right, Krista says, "Start with you."
I did not say start Carmen, I don't know if you're saying anything, I said start on this side.
Carmen's a further over there.
Okay, so I just have a question, like what is the policy within the town for non-employees driving town equipment? Like who authorizes it and what's the process for that?
I think that we have, since we lost Eugene, we have been contracting with Ivor to have assistance there, and that would be the person to do that. I don't know of any others that have driven any of the town equipment, but we have contracted...
Does that mean the only Ivor?
His crew, his business.
They shouldn't be running the town's equipment.
Like town vehicle?
They'd have to be on your policy for the insurance to be covered if they're using the town equipment.
That is a, that is probably true.
And they need to hold a medical card, and they need a physical card to drive the deep anything with the CDLs.
Anything that would require a CDL.
And even a one ton, you still need a medical card. It's commercial, you guys are considered commercial in your town. That's probably true.
This comment obviously isn't coming out of thin air. Did something happen?
Yes, I personally saw someone else driving a town truck today in Saxon River.
Okay. And we saw that as well.
Okay.
And it happened, I want to say like 8:30, 9 o'clock this morning?
I can't explain that.
I think we had the vehicle go to ATG, the big truck, and it had repair, and I believe that was the reason.
But is that, so who okayed this other person to drive the vehicle? It's not going back to insurance purposes, you can't just say it's okay one day and not okay another day, and it'd be, it's same for anyone, like why wasn't I called to drive the town truck? Or somebody else, or another, or Ivor himself?
Well, anybody that was working for Ivor, because they had the paperwork in with the town and their local, we, and Eugene was out and now he's gone, we have hired them on a per DM basis to do when they need them, when Matt needs them. And we can look into the, to the insurance part of it, but I know that they do have insurance, so.
And back to the medical card?
We can look into that, we can look into that.
So we need a motion to add?
I have a question that...
Well, let's, let's go around and we can let you come into it. Anything else, Carmen?
Nope.
Share it.
Yeah, I would like to make a suggestion that was discussed outside while we were waiting, and that is for the select board to consider having their meetings in the community center, so that when you go into executive session, which is quite frequent, the public does not have to stand outside as we did tonight and wait and wait and wait. So in a, in it's a much better space, I would think that that would be, I'm surprised it hasn't been thought of before. So I would like to make that as a suggestion.
All right, that's a good suggestion.
I'm not sure what you guys thought about doing about trash bags with Darlene moving, but I spoke to Brandy at the Saxon River store, because there's been comments on Facebook about people saying they're never, they never can get here to buy them. She's more than willing to put them in the store, obviously behind the counter, so nobody will take them, and she'll sell them out of the store.
What about Townsend Store, we thought of that too?
I haven't asked, but Brandy definitely said she would. I can ask Townsend if you want.
That's a good idea.
Brandy said just somebody reach out. I said, either Hannah or I can tell what you guys have got.
Yeah, why don't we have Hannah do that, talk with them and figure it out, and I don't think we, I think we give them the bags and then they give us the money that comes back in, that we don't expect them to put anything forward on the bags or anything like that, we just...
They, they can't take a commission on the, they're just gonna keep tack the money and give us all the proceeds.
Give us the money, but they don't have to buy the bags and then, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it would just be... Anything else?
That's a good idea.
Me?
Yep.
So to follow up on Carmen's question is whose insurance if Ivor's employee, employee has an accident with the town's equipment, whose insurance does that fall on?
Well, we will look into that.
Who's looking into that, David?
I can look into it.
Okay, do we need to make a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, we were wondering why the lettering isn't on the trucks.
I'm not sure, I have not asked or heard about that.
I know the day of the appointment, Matt was unable to make it, I think the town truck was weather related or he had something else he had to get done that day, but he said he was going to be doing it at Thanksgiving, but then I got a call back saying that the board never made the motion to have it done.
I will make a motion that we have the truck lettered. I think that we should pay for it, not ask Tom, not ask, well, we can reimburse you, I mean, I don't think it's your responsibility to have it done.
No, you, you put them on truck, so you don't want to talk.
Town has to pay for it.
I, I think it would be good to, for the town to do it and not, not leave it to you to have to do what the town should do, and probably should have done.
Years ago?
Years ago.
Yeah.
Exactly, brought up many years ago.
So I'll make a motion that we do get it lettered and that we reimburse Tom for the cost of it.
I'll second. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you can maybe just give Hannah the slip of what it was, I'll get that phone. I'll stop in on a Monday, one Monday, some Monday. The other thing is, I haven't got an answer on what they're gonna do about the leaves that come up against my house, or why the ditch ain't fixed out front yet, now it's another 30 days, now it's going on almost six months.
Are we even gonna look into that, David, what happened at the last meeting?
We, I talked to Matt a couple of times on that. On the, the part of the ditch, putting the, my suggestion to him about putting the piece on the culvert, he said, "Well, it's private." Come on. That's what, that's...
You guys put coves in on the lower...
I gotta ask another question.
But...
Who is this steward of the bar of the road crew?
Well, we all are.
Now, don't act like it, David, because you're letting him walk on you. Now, that's a pretty important excuse, to walk the road out and draw gravel up there every other day instead of putting a piece of cove on the culvert, it's private law in the night. And don't bother him to drive a car that was a grade of that, still private.
That was his, that was what he said to me when I mentioned that to him.
So, I hope it's my turn.
Sure, it's your turn then.
Tomorrow morning, the cove that goes on the private property is gonna be eliminated. If they can't maintain a cove that's on private drive, uh, property, then it should be eliminated. The water that runs out through behind my garage from the town road, that ditch will be plugged, because it's just courtesy to let the water go out around there. If you guys can't maintain any of your stuff that dumps on the private property, then it shouldn't be there. The other thing is the state just put a bridge sign up, posting the wait at the bottom of Mill Hill for that bridge. Well, now when you come down the hill and you look to the right, all you do is look at the sign, you can't see traffic coming.
And the state put the sign?
There's a big, there's a sign.
The wait sign, they're the ones that do that.
And the state installed that sign?
I'm assuming they once...
Yeah, there's a notification that the state was putting up new signs.
Well, if you can't see when you're coming down that road, we should talk to the state about moving that sign.
Where is this?
At the bottom of Mill Hill.
Bottom of Mill Hill.
A car, you look under it, but anything bigger than a car, you're looking right at the sign, you can't look up the road to see if someone's coming unless you pull out into the road.
Now, is it, is it this side of Mill Hill or the other side? Right, is it right at the bridge?
Right at the bridge.
Now, if they moved it down this side of Mill Hill?
You're gonna look at it looking down the road, but they gotta set it back or do something so you can at least see it before you pull out.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Then my other thing is, is a follow-up on the letter from the last meeting, what's going on with that?
It has been, it is to be added to the minutes of last, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the last regular meeting in October, which was, I forget the date, but it 19th of October.
So can we get copies of that line?
No, you can't.
Tonight?
Well, Hannah's busy, but I suspect that we can, you can get minutes out if somebody wants it.
I don't have a copy of it, but I can put it on the copier if you want me to.
David, there's another, there's a pothole in the bottom of Mill Hill that's been like that now for almost three months. They drive up by there with a pothole, every other day they go up, clean the beam and saw now. Why can't they take a bucket of gravel with them and put it in that hole?
Well, I know they don't go up there to do, to take the beavers workout every day, but, or every other day, but, and one would think that they could put some gravel in the hole, but I know they end up there every other day.
There's one sentence on the back, I didn't copy the backside.
I have a question.
You just want to read it.
So if you guys are the boss of what the road crew, correct? So shouldn't you guys be telling them or giving them some kind of agenda, whether it's monthly, weekly, whatever, to kind of say, "Hey, this is what needs to be done"?
We do, we talk to them and...
I mean, does it get ignored? I don't know.
I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to do, and now we only have one person, so...
But shouldn't also the road foreman be here so when everyone has questions, they can be answered and it doesn't go to you guys, and then by the next meeting, it's ignored and it's all forgotten?
No, it's, it's a duty to ask us and for us to take the responsibility to see that it's done. Because you're an employee of the town doesn't mean that you can stand, stand in the dock and be questioned by everybody in town.
No, and I get that.
We can, we can, but we wouldn't...
So if something doesn't get done, say like you guys do whatever, an agenda, and it doesn't get done, do we come and complain to you guys or like?
Yeah, because we're technically the road commissioners.
So, but then what if it doesn't, it still doesn't get done, then?
Like three months ago?
It's been more than three months.
Well...
Then you elect new people.
Is that? So, all right, anybody else for public comment? All right. We will move the Wyndham Regional Commission up. And put the budget for me down again, so...
Don't you want to hang out with us for longer?
Everybody deserted you?
We should have brought popcorn.
Sure, you can come right up over to us out.
The warrants, maybe.
These yours, Krista, or these mine?
Oh, they're mine.
Mine and Boris'. David probably took them, he always does. Yeah, he put them under his...
Mine, under my thing.
All right, I don't really, I hate mechanical pencils, I break them extra. No, I don't want to break it, it's gonna sting me.
Let's go ahead.
All right, well, thank you guys for allowing us to be here and speak to you about the Resiliency Zone project that we're working on for a little while now.
The wha-hoo-ha, I missed that.
No, just, I was thanking you for letting us come and speak to y'all tonight. My name is Mike McConnell, I'm a senior planner with the Wyndham Regional Commission, this is my counterpart, Matty, and I'll let you go through your bio here.
Thank you. I'm a project manager at Green Mountain Power, I work up in Rochester. I'm from Opelia, and it's a pleasure to be down here tonight. I did a lot of work to upgrade the grid and keep the power on, so I'm going to talk to you about some of the work that we're doing, see how we can help you all, and what some of your priorities are. And we're partnering with Wyndham Regional Commission on this work for a number of towns in the area.
Well, I mean, certainly, we lose power a lot out here, I think you can ask anybody here that we, that we certainly lose power, and then it stays, because we are kind of at the end of the line, coming from ground from Springfield. Now, Wyndham, not Wyndham Regional, but Green Mountain Power came up with a program or something about trying to eliminate power outages?
Yeah, I brought some information on it.
Can you explain that or give us a little info on really what I think is not gonna happen, but we would all like to have happen?
Sure, yeah, that's pretty cool, and I'll let Mike kind of, do you want to lead?
Oh, no, go for it.
Okay, we'll dive right in. So, Green Mountain Power and Wyndham Regional Commission, like I said, we're partnering on helping come up with plans for towns around, we call them resiliency zone projects. So that's where we work with a town to figure out what's the critical infrastructure in town that needs to stay powered up, where are there maybe vulnerable residents, things like that, to come up with custom projects. So we have a few active projects right now, I'll give a couple of examples of them, just to give you an idea of what that might look like. In Rochester, right up on, along Route 100, we're developing a microgrid, so it's where there's a big battery and a solar array, and if there's a larger grid outage, the battery and the solar array will keep downtown powered up. And that's where they have the fire station and their emergency shelter, the school, things like that. So that's one of the other projects. In Grafton, for example, we're doing residential batteries, so batteries in people's homes, because, you know, there's not necessarily space to do a larger battery or solar project, so the best solution there would be to get the backup power right in folks' homes.
And does that cost to the residents who get those?
No, so GMP is doing this work. So I brought some information about zero outages, just so you all can refer back to this, it's two sides. So as David was mentioning, we put in a filing with the Public Utility Commission, the state authority that regulates us, called our Zero Outages Initiative.
Sandy?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so our goal is to make it so that customers don't experience power, any power interruptions by 2030. And that doesn't mean, you know, that we can stop all outages, but we want to make sure that folks have either battery storage or we're creating, for example, it's called feeder backup, where part of a circuit goes down, we can back it up from another substation, implementing different layers of solutions across the grid. And the reason we're doing this work is because we know that outages are happening frequently, but we also know that storms are getting worse, more frequent. We've had six major storms in the past year. Will we consider a major storm based on the amount of restoration work that we have to do? So we're looking to strengthen the grid quickly so that we can withstand the storms. So on the back page, there's a illustration that shows how we're gonna break each of our circuits into four zones, and we'll deploy different types of resiliency solutions for each zone. So that includes a combination, we're talking with folks outside earlier about what some of it might look like, but a combination of undergrounding lines where it makes sense to do so, so trees can't fall on them, running, it's called spacer cable. You might see it in some areas around Athens. It kind of looks like a diamond that's up on the top of the lines, and that keeps them separated and runs a steel cable across the top that can hold up several trees, so they're not taking lines down, running tree wire, and then doing battery storage for folks that are furthest out, where maybe we can't, it doesn't make sense to underground the lines or, or we can't underground them. So we're, we need to get approval from the state to start the work. It's work we're doing anyways, it's all technology that we use every single day, but we're just hoping to do it faster.
So who would determine who would get the batteries?
So that's, we would do, we're gonna do a zone analysis for each circuit, so Zone 4, for example, is that last line on the second page, that's based upon customer density on a section of the circuit, so we'll have to map out where Zone 4 is on each circuit. Eventually, we'd like to bring battery storage to all customers, but we'll just start with the folks that are furthest out, where, like I said, maybe we can't deploy some of those other solutions faster.
Now, you have a program now where people can get Tesla batteries, I believe?
Yeah, we have a lease program right now.
But those are quite expensive, aren't they?
It's $55 a month to lease the Tesla batteries right now.
What is it to buy it, though?
Oh, to buy, yeah, if you were to buy it outright, if you were to buy it outright and then allow, join the, it's called Bring Your Own Device Program, the cost to buy the batteries is around $23,000. It's quite expensive. I know, that's why we have the lease program. We, if you want to buy them and own them, we'll provide an incentive of around $10,000 to help essentially cut the cost in half if you want to own them, otherwise we've got the lease.
Do anybody, does anybody buy them?
Yeah, quite a few people do, must be nice.
Must be rough.
It is, yeah. And again, they'll get that incentive from us, but the vast majority of people lease them for folks that are in the program.
And the batteries backups that you would provide, are those those same batteries?
Yeah, yep, it's the same batteries, and we are regularly looking at different battery technologies. So right now, we mostly use power panels, but we test all different kinds of batteries often.
So these batteries, how long do they last, like six hours?
So it depends on how much electricity you're using at home. So there's 27 kilowatts of stored power in them. The average home uses around 20 kilowatt hours of electricity in a day, but we have folks who, you know, they'll either turn off breakers or just limit the usage, you know, not do your laundry or things like that, and we've had folks glassed over six days with them. Yeah.
Now, with these batteries, you can also backfeed from them, is that part of the thing that you're looking at?
Like powering your own home with them during the day?
To the grid, I believe.
To the grid.
Yeah, yeah, so that is part of the program. So with the, with the lease program right now, you've got your battery there, ready to supply backup power in an outage, but then when there are monthly and annual peak usage across the state, so that's when we're using the maximum amount of power, we usually have to buy power and bring it in from out of state, often from, they're called peaking plants, so like, you know, coal and fossil fuel plants that they fire up. What we do instead is when peaks are forecasted, we call on all the batteries so that they do backfeed to the grid and basically kind of supply power for the state, and that brings the peak power costs down. So that's how the lease program works right now.
So, but Green Mountain wouldn't pay the person for the amount of kilowatts you take off the batteries?
So, yeah, so we, so whatever we take out and then to fill the batteries back up, we, that doesn't, that's not a cost for customers, yeah, it gets netted out on your bill. That's a good question.
I can only see that the batteries would not be sufficient for some households.
Yeah, sometimes two batteries isn't enough, depending on what the setup is in the house, so...
Well, like our house, we have a wood furnace, but we also have circulating pumps. There's a lot of friggin circulating pumps in my house, and a battery like that, if it was the dead of winter, even if I shut off, a lot of other stuff probably could not...
Well, they're pretty, I mean, they're fairly powerful, though.
Yeah, they can put out a full 10 kilowatts of power, so that's the, so 27 kilowatt hours of energy.
Well, all I know is my, my bill is always high, and no matter, and I mean, I have the LED lights, I, I have bought energy efficient appliances, and my bill runs $189 a month.
Yeah.
That's sort of where, that's sort of where Wyndham Regional comes in. We're gonna be doing some community level outreach to figure out what people's needs are, and maybe there's a different solution for, for you, you know, you might not need what you need, right? So, and it might be in a, in a location where it makes more sense to employ microgrid, for example, so...
Yeah, but you have to remember, our house only has two people in it.
Yeah, we have five.
But, you know, that's, that's been like a continuing fight with me, is paying for our electric bill, because, you know, Green Mountain Power went through this phase where they seemed like every three months, they wanted to change what my monthly payment was. So I was paying well over $200 a month, and then, you know, three months later, all of a sudden, it's like, okay, well, now we'll knock it down to $229, and then all of a sudden, I'm back up to like $259.
But is that just what you use, correct?
Yeah, but it's, it was, for a while, it was the inconsistency of Green Mountain Power. It wasn't like before where twice a year, you had a change in your bill if you were on a monthly plan. You know, with Green Mountain Power, they went through a phase there that it was like every three months, they were changing what my monthly bill was. So it doesn't make me very happy with you.
Well, I would be more than happy to talk with you about your account, and just so you know, so our, our rates, you know, the per kilowatt hour charge, we can't change that without approval by the state, so, yeah, we can certainly, you know, be happy to follow up with you.
Yeah, we happen to be on like the last line.
Yeah, far, far out.
Where Reed Road is like technically the last line for Green Mountain Power, and there have been years that everybody else in town got their power back and somebody forgot to flip the switch for our road.
Yeah, restoration can take a while depending on where you live, and, and that's why we're wanting to do this work so that there are fewer outages and we can, you know, send the line crews out to the, to get the power turned back on faster. So that's the goal.
Yeah, I mean, I know that there have been instances where, you know, major outages across the state, and crews are working on it, and, you know, we have a few hundred people here, and you've got a thousand somewhere else, but we, we had one, one tree across the line that was down, one, one thing, and it would have recharged everybody, but we had to wait the six days or whatever it was to get that one, this is a few years ago, and it was just almost across the...
Right, it's pretty amazing what one tree can do.
So, but it was one tree, but they didn't come out and fix that, and I'm sure we're not gonna get that solved tonight, but that is something that I think Green Mountain Power could look at.
Yeah, thanks for that. So, yeah, we, go ahead, Mike.
Well, yes, hopefully this effort will, hopefully it'll legally, alleviate some of that tension.
Yeah, I mean, I, we understand you want to get the most back the soonest, but where you have 35 problems in one area, but you have one or two in another, maybe...
Yeah, so making it so that there are, the goal is to make it so that there's fewer spots where outages are occurring, or if they are occurring, folks have battery backup to keep them powered up until we can get there. Or if they are occurring, folks have battery backup to keep them powered up until we can get there.
Yeah, we are, we are infamous out here.
Yeah.
Losing power.
Yep.
You know, it can be a beautiful calm day.
Yep.
And then suddenly, whoop.
So is there any, anything about grants or anything for people that wanna put in generators or community? Like, we have a generator here, our community center doesn't, our town garage doesn't.
Yeah, so.
Anything for that?
That's the kind of information that we'd love to talk with you about to find out, you know, what places don't currently have generators where we could maybe do larger battery systems, not necessarily the power walls, but you know, a bigger battery, for example. So would, you know, kind of the ask is that we'd love to just continue connecting with you and learning about what the needs of the, the town are. Certainly don't wanna figure all of that out tonight.
Why not?
Just introduce ourselves and be in touch. And there will be funding becoming available for home back, you know, like, so waiting on state approval for this big project. But in the meantime, there's gonna be some state funding that's coming available that will be funneled through Green Mountain Power for battery installations in homes for certain income levels. So we'll let you all know when that's coming out, you know, 'cause that's something that could benefit people now while we wait for approval on this. We're hoping sometime in the spring, we'll hear back from the state. So we'll be in touch about that and there's also gonna be.
Is that the one that Wyndham Regional was looking at last fall? There was something about?
I started last November, so.
Oh, this is some new state funding, it's pretty recent. Yeah, it's really recent.
So, but there is, it's really, the only funding is for the batteries, not for an independent generator with?
Correct, it's for battery storage. Yep, and there will also be some funding that's coming available. Again, there's some income qualifications, but for electric panel upgrades and service upgrades as well. So, you know, a battery installation, a panel upgrade could happen at the same time. Or if folks are just needing, you know, to upgrade the electrical in their homes, there's some state funding coming for that, too.
And if there's panel upgrades, the homeowner pays for those?
The state funding would cover that. So it would cover the cost of a new electrical panel, the wiring, if there's any utility work that's needed, folks can get up to ten thousand dollars for that. It's not available yet, it's coming soon and we'll let you know as soon as folks can sign up for it.
I do wanna be clear, though, this effort right now is to figure out what type of infrastructure and where it's gonna do the most good.
Yep.
And that is also fully and completely, completely made for by a secret that Wyndham Regional got, pays for my time.
Yeah, the planning work for figuring that out and the, some of the studies and things like that.
We're barred with this, so that if we needed to contact you with questions or anything?
Mike's got his and then I'll send you all a follow-up email, so you've got my contact information and my phone number. Yeah, please reach out anytime with questions or thoughts. So, we really appreciate it. I brought a map, I don't know if you'll wanna copy this, it's an outage map, I know you, I know you know.
Oh, see, all right down there, that's.
Yeah, that's what I. You want a copy? Yeah, if you could just send your information to Hannah and then she can get it, yeah, out to us.
Definitely.
Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Diane.
Pretty quick after Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Safe trip home.
All right, meeting with the budget committee.
Amber.
Amber. So we came up with a bunch of questions for you guys to think about and figure out. One of the questions that came up was the trash recycle service. Will that have a separate article or should we budget that in as normal? And we also need to get quotes from D Camp for the full service, if we wanna go back to full service or stay the way we are.
What's full service?
Every other week.
I, I was thinking that we should have an article, I know we've done it before, but it seems like we've been complaining about what we have right now. Maybe the people believed be going to go back to where it was.
I mean, I know we were asked to cut the budget and that was the largest piece of funding that we defined. Am I happy with the trash service being? I'm not, I am not. I have trash piled up, but.
And the other thing, too, is I think when people cut the budget, they didn't realize that that was the thing that was, like, I don't think.
Well, a lot of things got cut.
No, I know, but I, that was the one that people were mad about.
That people, it impacted people.
Well, that's probably the question on if we should have it as a separate article instead of in the budget.
That would.
Can we do both?
No. I, I would think a, a special article would be fine, but we might want to have it what, what the different services would be, if it was every other week, you know, two, two trash, two recycling, what that figure is, what it is once a month.
Yeah, break it down.
And have those, have, you know, the figures so that people could look at it and say, well, we want this or we want that.
So what, I'm new to this. So, so what amount, if you're having them vote separately on, like, what service it's gonna be, then what amount goes in the budget that gets voted? Because isn't there a vote for the big budget and then there's a separate article, so how does that work?
So if there's a separate article, that portion is not part of the budget we vote on, but that amount of money gets added.
Okay.
So articles are usually supposed to be a yes or no question, so you probably, it's not gonna be like a this.
No, it's not gonna, do you want this or do you want this? But it should, we should have the figures there for people to understand and know. And do you, you can make it however you want, do you want to return trash to?
So maybe we can put in the current level of service in the budget and then have an article saying, would you like to increase the trash and recycling pickup to an every other week service again for this amount of extra?
But if you do that, you'll get a, whatever, they say, sure, we want to increase it to the way it was. But then the, the main budget gets cut and we have to look for places to cut. I think it should be the whole thing in the article.
I'm agreeing with David on this, I think if it's gonna be trash service returning, the whole budget amount should be in it, the whole amount should be in there for the whole year, what it's gonna cost, and not put it in the budget, because if the budget gets cut, that will be one of the things that gets cut out again.
So if the article gets voted down, there's no trash or there's one to?
No, you would vote.
No trash at all?
If the article gets voted down that they don't want it, then there would be no trash.
Well, no, no, you could amend it to bring.
Well, you can amend it.
You can amend it to bring it to what it is now.
Yes.
And, and do that, or you can vote to what it was every other week.
Can I ask a question? Possible suggestion, I mean, if you place, if you frame the article for an amount and the amount for what you think the town wants to bring it back to. And so you're voting on an amount, but have the information that says the amount of what different levels of service would be.
That's what we've been talking about.
Okay, it sounded like you were describing the service to vote on, not the amount.
Well, it's, it's gonna be the amount, you can't, you don't vote the service, you vote the amount. Linda?
Yeah, the whole purpose of, of people purchasing the green bags was to defray the cost of the trash, right?
Not the whole cost.
Well, it, it helps, it helps.
So what, why didn't they also have people purchase those bags for their recycling?
Because you can't, the state law says that you have to take recycling for free.
Oh, okay.
We can't charge people to recycle. Although the pickup place charges us more for recycling than they do for trash.
Yeah.
But we can't charge.
But we can't charge.
And then the next question came up was the large truck replacement. That's been talked about, the large truck replacement, this experience. I know it's been talked about a couple years now, but didn't know where we stood with that.
I don't know how much we have in, in the reserve account for the.
You've got a balance sheet.
Yeah, mine disappeared, here, use mine. You're better at reading the numbers than me.
It looks like you've got fifty-eight thousand three hundred and four dollars right now for the large truck replacement.
And that, if we bought a new truck, that would be nowhere near enough. And even a used truck, that, that is probably not gonna be enough.
I, I don't think that the intention when we started these funds was to have it paid in full.
The intention was to have a chunk of money to put towards whatever we needed.
Yes, that is true.
And then the other question was the legal services for the.
So there, there's no, I'm just sorry, I was trying to take notes. So for the large truck replacement, there's no, no decisions? No thoughts about if we need to add more money to the budget to replace that truck?
I mean, if we're staying on that same payment schedule, which I think was a great payment schedule when it started, but with the cost of everything going up.
We might wanna look at all of the.
That's another question down the line.
What?
That's another question.
Oh, my God, Amber, that's all questions?
I mean.
No, no.
We.
We're not gonna get all of those answered tonight for you.
No, I don't have all those questions.
I just said that's one of the questions later on.
Yeah, it, I mean, it was, it was a good schedule when we did it and it probably still is within reason, but I'm not sure that it's complete the way it is on the ground right now.
I'm gonna skip to that question. So the next question was the equipment fund, prices are going up, should we add three percent each year to that that we had normally been putting in?
I think maybe we looked at what the replacement costs are gonna be and try and adjust them to that because, say, the tobacco went down because we leased that.
That was the other question about leasing.
If we, what the trucks we buy and that, those figures and, and the prices are going way up, certainly. Should we re, should we have the budget committee reevaluate the schedule that we have? That might be the reasonable thing. And if you think all we need to do is the three percent, I mean, we can do that, but maybe it's better to look at it.
Yeah, so Mike, Mike didn't come, but I mean, he's been working on the schedule. I think he's maybe a bit frustrated that the schedule we put together originally hasn't been followed at all, so it's, it's hard to like.
I know, we followed it some, but it, but there have been some.
When it's, the recommendations aren't really being followed, so. It would be, I think it would be great if the select one maybe wanted to work with him a little bit on that.
Okay.
So his work isn't wasted.
That sounds like a good idea.
I mean, I don't think that, I think we've tried to follow that original schedule, but things like the small truck and that, that costs more than we had saved for and, and then we did do the backhoe as a lease instead of a purchase, so. That changed that.
I think more of the equipment will probably be end up them doing that if there's going for leases rather than purchasing.
Can't lease trucks. Can't lease trucks.
Nope.
Okay.
Their lease figure is based on the total value and they basically are just financing it through them. That's how they do the lease for the trucks. It's called capital lease and at the end you pay a dollar. Yeah, so you might as well go to a bank and get a better interest rate and buy it yourself.
And the other thing was the question about the reclassification of the roads. Do we need to add anything into legal services for that?
I, I mean, it will cost some, I, I don't think it's gonna cost a ton. I don't know what that figure would be. What is it cheap, right?
Uh, my hourly rate's six sixty-five, so.
That's good. Um, it's, I don't know how many hours it's gonna cost.
Six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Um, I, I mean, it shouldn't be a lot. They would do the, they would do the warnings and stuff for us, the. I, I, I don't think it's gonna be a lot, maybe twenty-five hundred, something like that.
I'd put in five grand.
For that?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause you're gonna have back and forth, you gotta talk to them, right? Any emails?
Not, not a lot.
Well, if there's anything that's.
It's better to put in more than to put in less.
I would put in, I would put in five grand, 'cause we have to have a hearing, right?
We have to have a hearing.
We have to talk to West Minister, right?
And Rockingham.
And Rockingham.
Well, it may be not Rockingham, but certainly West Minister would have to join in with us on it.
Okay, they have to draft something, maybe they could have a template. I, I'm, I would put in five grand.
So we usually have five thousand for a total of legal services per year, so, so we put in ten thousand?
No, I wouldn't.
Are you saying five thousand just for the road stuff or?
Well, it's just, it's just with the hearing and everything, if they have to come, if they, does the lawyer have to be here for that?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
So you're saying just keep it at a five thousand?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised, though, if that, if there's questions. Like, if, if everything goes smoothly, then it should be twenty-five hundred. But if anybody has any issues, any questions, it's just that's, that's where it starts to get, you know, phone calls, back and forth emails.
No, I, I get that, I, I think we need to, I think we need to add some more to it than the five thousand for the, for the Overhill Road, 'cause it is gonna cost.
Oh, it's seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
Is that a class four, David? I don't know.
I didn't hear what you said.
He said it was a class four, but what it would. Did anybody look at them, that paperwork at the town grave? I have not been able to, between, for that, but it's not a trail and that's what we would be classifying it as, is a town trail, where we wouldn't have to do the bridges and culverts or maintain the road other than a. But, and I know it's not a trail, so it's either a class four or a class three, that's the only question that we've got. Now, I got one other question, this bridge right here. Yep. Has that been condemned by the state? It has not.
No. It's on their not very good list.
But it's not been condemned and we're looking in FEMA and stuff about hazardous mitigation and getting money to replace it.
The next thing was highway wages and hiring of a laborer. Questions about that. Are you doing raises or anything and are you anticipating the cost of a new laborer late?
We are anticipating.
We.
We haven't set anything yet, so we are anticipating.
Yep.
I mean, we have an employment notice on our agenda, so we will be putting out employment notice, but we haven't really.
I mean, these are just questions, I mean, we can meet again and get the answers. And then.
So Fortuita doing that budget committee meeting for a longer extended time.
Yeah. Matching funds for projects is one of the other questions. On how much you wanna do that.
I think with the amount of grants that we have coming in and the potential of money we have coming in, I don't have the exact dollar figure in my head, but I would say definitely yes. I, 'cause we don't wanna cut that back.
No, because that would mean that we.
Lose out on other money.
Lose out on ninety percent of a project paid for if we didn't have the money to pay the ten percent, ten, twenty percent of a project, so.
Come to follow that grant matching?
Yes.
I think. And then there's planning commission, I wasn't part of that meeting.
We have encouraged the planning commission to work on that. I think that there are grants from the state for some of that work, but yes, there would probably be needed some money from the town as well, but I don't know the figure for that. And maybe we.
I believe there's a thousand dollars in the planning commission fund right now.
Yep, so I don't think it would be a lot that we would have to put in there, but there probably should be some. And maybe the planning commission can give us an idea of what that, what they think and that they might need for that.
And then I think this is the last question, transferring funds to the community center fund for scoping projects. I wasn't part of that conversation, so I'm not sure about that.
Um, that was, yeah, that's to try to keep the scoping work moving for the community center so that we have something to base a grant application on. And I have an email from Maggie Foley somewhere here, I think she suggests. Well, she said it's hard to get, it's hard to get grants for planning projects because Athens doesn't have a town plan. But she says, I would budget what you can for the scoping work. But she says, I would budget what you can for the scoping work. Thirty percent would be a good start, but more would be ideal based on what I'm seeing so far. So if we could put some money into the community center, like bigger project fund.
So we want to, we wouldn't wanna add that to the matching grant fund?
Either, I mean, whichever way, yeah, whichever works for the town. I don't think it matters which fund it ends up in, but.
Yeah, but if we put it in there, wouldn't we not maybe have to vote on that if we start a new fund for the community center matching?
The fund's already been started. Um, well, I mean, there's a fund that the fundraising money has been going into. The community center has its own fund now, so.
Yeah.
So it could be either there or it could be in the grant matching, yeah.
I mean, if it's in the grant matching, it doesn't necessarily go towards.
It wouldn't necessarily be going toward there, it doesn't say, you know, but we've.
No. No, but if it's in the community center, then it would be specifically, but I think it doesn't make a difference.
But then if we. I, I think it would be more reasonable to keep it in one fund, and then if we have, this year we can do the bridge. Uh, but we need X number of dollars, we have it there, but if it is sliced off for the community center, then we can't use it. But if we aren't gonna be doing anything and it just sits there.
So there's five thousand dollars in the grant matching fund right now. Um, I think we'll, we want, you know, at least eight thousand dollars, if not more. To as a thirty percent match for the community center scoping work. I don't know how much you might need for the bridge. But do we wanna put more than, than usual amount into the grant matching fund?
I would think we would, but we would, should figure out what the, the community center, what you think the scoping work would be.
We, we have a quote of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we also need to have a figure of what the, the FEMA and things are for the bridges to add to that too.
Mm-hmm.
And then put that all in there and hopefully just explain to people this is here to, to be able to get the grants. And be able to pay our share.
So we don't know, we don't have that, that FEMA figure yet?
No, we'll work on it soon.
I don't mind looking at Sandy, it's, you know, right?
Yeah, look at her, please.
Right.
But, but in the, in the fund, you can make a, a notation, you know, X for is, is planned for there.
We can do those sub-fund things like we do in the equipment fund, yeah. Balance, separate balances, yeah.
Yeah, so you can say, you know, so that in two years, nobody says, oh, what was this money for? Well, we wanted some for this and we wanted some for this. But it can be used for anything. If, if we got a grant for the community center and you couldn't get the bridge, but we needed money, so it's easier to do that.
So we had a handful of questions for Matt, but he's not here, so I'm gonna ask you guys. Um, general supplies, what he might need at the town garage. Um, trash removal for the town garage, and then, um, highway expense, uh, equipment expenses, a new sander.
Amber, you wanna email those questions to me and I will talk to Matt with them?
Okay. I know he's working on looking into the chloride tank and then any long-term highway projects that you guys know about or anything.
Um, on that note, is this a time to ask if we could look into how much it would cost to put a porta potty there? And then also if there's a way that we can put in any money to make minor improvements to the garage or put in something like a coffee making area, like a table. It's like, it has to have running, I don't know what we would need for that.
But we could get like, I was, we mentioned like a five gallon.
Yeah, is there any way just to see how much a porta potty there would cost as well as, I don't know, general group, I don't know, do you have to get those restocked every month? Yeah.
Wow.
Porta potty?
No.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, no, no, but like the, the water, laundry stuff, yeah.
They deliver.
They deliver that.
Can you add that to, to looking into that, please?
Last time I got a quote on a porta potty, and this was several years ago, it was a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, but they deserve a bathroom, so if it's something we can put in there, if we could just get a figure, that would be great.
I think if you rent them long-term, they're cheaper.
Yeah.
If you're looking into porta potties, I would suggest that you also just see what kind of options Richard Institute offers because they're doing.
Is that the P energy place?
That's the P energy place, yeah, or not P, P.
Don't they buy, don't they buy waste?
No, you give it to them.
But we get, we get something for it, right? Don't they?
I think so.
I don't think so, but they're collecting urine and then using it as a fertilizer, but they are doing, they have, um, porta potties at the summer farmer's market in.
Yeah.
And two different kinds, and, um, I think there could be a lower cost option that could be a longer term.
Yeah, just, just something about Richards, is it the Richards? Didn't we do something with them for the meeting house? They came up for something, the Richards, and what's it called?
Well, I talked about having had a conversation with them.
Rich Earth.
Rich Earth, sorry.
No.
Rich Earth Institute, yes, I'm certainly yes.
In a very.
There are, there are some locations that you can deposit. You can, you can take, a wheelbarrow, follow it down and they will take it.
Yeah.
I believe that's the end of my questions.
On that note.
On that note.
All right. Anybody else have anything for the budget committee? What about we try, when's the next budget committee meeting?
Uh, December seven?
Twelve, I think.
Yeah, December twelve.
December twelve.
December twelfth, what time?
Seven.
Seven.
So do we want to try and warn that as a special? Select board meeting just to meet with them?
Yes.
Okay.
And then.
Oh, it's a Tuesday.
Sorry, kiddo.
It's not Thursday, it's not regularly.
It's out of the job.
I don't have my calendar. When do we have to vote on the final budget?
Um, first part of January. It has, by January twenty-fifth, we have to have everything for the.
I'd like it before then, because if, if we wait.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Are we asking them to put in cola and the insurance increases?
No.
Oh, no, it's the next week.
Yeah. So that's twenty, the twenty-first is our meeting.
Okay.
We will be full of Christmas cheer.
Bah, humbug.
I won't be here, but Janet's bringing hot chocolate.
What, for the twenty-first?
You're not gonna be here?
Oh, the twenty-first? Oh, we have the twenty-first, sorry, I thought you said the twelfth.
All right, well, that's.
The twelfth is the budget meeting with.
There will be a special, we will want a special select board meeting just to meet with the budget committee. You're good with that.
At what time, regular time?
Seven.
Seven.
All right.
Sure.
The employment notice. Um, is, is probably everybody knows, Eugene passed away. Um, and, uh. Do we have anything for that? Do we have a?
I just didn't know the contact information. I'm sure it will be the town's, uh, email or getting in touch with, uh. Hannah for the application.
Do we have an application, Hannah?
Uh, there's, there's some old ones that we've used in the jar.
I know that in, there have been changes of things you can ask and cannot ask. Um, maybe VLCT could give us a application?
I can ask.
Get, I mean, was that not really, you knowing more about that than any of us?
Yeah, I, that's what I do. But most of the things wouldn't normally be on a application. I can look it over, but ELTC can too.
Yeah, but I, I suspect they have one, a, a boilerplate one that they.
They should.
Is that an, an advertisement, Janet, that you wrote?
Yes, yes. I just didn't have the contact information added. I figured you could do that.
Sure.
Cause they would be contacting you for applications and stuff.
Mm-hmm, sure.
I could put an application up on the website too. Somebody read that.
Town of Athens Equipment Operator Truck Driver, the town of Athens from modest seeking qualified applicants. For a full-time equipment operator truck driver, job duties include snow plowing, salting, sanding in the winter months. And general highway maintenance and construction work in the other months. The employee must be able to perform general labor duties and minor repairs and maintenance of highway equipment. Ability to communicate in a courteous manner to coworkers and the general public is required. Must have a valid CDL license. Town of Athens equal opportunity employer. Uh, and does not offer, and does offer an excellent benefit package. Applicants will be accepted until a position is filled.
So are, are you going to be requiring the five years' job experience that's in your employee policy?
I was just looking for that. Is that in here?
Did we get Crystal a book yet so I can have my, yes, book back?
Yeah, you have it, right? Darlene copied you one.
I have one with me. I'm not sure which one. I might have a second one in my car, but I have one with me.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, I don't know if there's an official written one about five years. That's what I was looking for.
Oh, I see probationary period.
Yeah.
Unnoked hour services, compensation, gratuity and gifts, hypnotism.
I don't think there's an experience, and it may have been in a, in a.
Previous.
Previous ad that we had requested experience. I don't know that though for sure.
I think experience would be good considering how it's not side-by-side work and somebody's not gonna be holding this person's hand.
Yeah, no.
They'll be on their own.
But I think we don't need to necessarily put that in the ad. That can be judged at the time of the application.
I'm not asking about the ad. I'm just asking when applicants look, put in, are you gonna be requiring?
Yeah, that should be judged at the time of the, the application. Yeah, we don't have any.
I remember seeing it when, somewhere before, when we.
What I think it may have been was in the, in the ad itself before, but I can't be sure of that.
Yeah, 'cause we don't have anything in the personnel policy with it.
So are we good with this? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we.
That we post it, uh, post it on the website in.
It doesn't say how they apply. Well.
Well, that was a contact, contact Hannah.
That was the contact information I didn't have, so.
Yeah, it will be contact Hannah at, the town clerk at, Amber.
And she can print one out, or she can probably email one if you get it from VLCT.
Application.
To, to the board wants me to email you one, to the applicants?
No, no, to the applicant. If somebody calls you and say, I want an application.
Yeah, I mean, I can even put it on the website and they can download it.
Yeah.
That's so much easier. Yeah.
Well, I mean, if somebody doesn't have, we can print it out.
Someone can walk in the door and I can hand it to them, or they could download it and print it out themselves.
Yes.
Yes.
Easy.
Um, and do we wanna post it in the legal notices? I don't think we require to at all, but do we want to post it?
I think we should put it in the paper, right?
That's what I'm saying. You can. Do we want to?
Yeah, why not? Unless it's gonna be a hardship.
Now, will it be in, under legal notices? Will it be under employment notice?
Employment, you can also post it with VLCT.
VLCT.
Yeah, let's post it with VLCT.
VLCT.
You said TT.
All right, so we're gonna, uh, post it on the bowling boards, on the town website with VLCT. Um, and we can put it in the paper as a help wanted, uh, thing if people wanna do that. I mean, there's certainly online places we can post it if people want.
Sounds good.
I can put it on the Facebook page just so it gets out there a little bit more.
Usually, usually having the Vermont Journal all the time, Dallas Springfield, Dallas Rockingham, Dallas Westminster, Dallas Chester, they're all looking for help right now. Throw that down the line.
Oh, yeah.
A little bringing out in there.
So it's in what, Vermont Journal?
Vermont, Vermont Journal.
And everybody gets it.
By the Vermont comment?
No.
No.
Everybody gets it for free.
I mean, yeah.
I'd rather put it in that than the Rattleboro reformer.
Well, we made.
But what are we looking for their start date?
But that's for legal notices. This isn't an illegal notice. Um.
That's for legal notice. Right, but with the.
I think the journal people see it more.
Yeah, good employment, yeah.
So, yeah, let's put it.
So the motion is, these make the motion to post the ad in the local boards, town website, VLCT, and in the Vermont Journal paper.
Yeah, the motion is. Yeah, as a help wanted, not a legal notice. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And she'll put her information on there, 'cause that's not on there.
Yep. Boards officials and treasurers report.
Is it, I'm, I'm happy to skip that in, in the interest of time.
Okay.
I do have the school board report from Lynn.
Let's hear the school one.
Okay. One, this is from Lynn Morgan. Um, once again, we are putting out a call for someone interested in joining the Athens School Board team. We are still one person short. Uh, enrollment at Grafton School as of November ninth is forty-four students. There were twelve from Athens, twenty from Grafton, and two from Westminster. November ninth at noon, Grafton held its annual Thanksgiving Veteran Appreciation Lunch. The PTO once again provided a wonderful meal and the students put on a nice program for our veterans. This week has been circus residency for the students. On this Friday, the seventeenth, so that's tomorrow, at ten, there will be a student circus showcase. This will be an opportunity for students to show us what they have learned over the past week. Everyone from the community is invited. The principal reported that GES received an official designation as a PBIS school. She explained that PBIS is for positive behavior, positive behavior interventions and supports. It's a research-based framework for teaching and supporting positive behaviors for all students. The school-wide approach to discipline focuses on building a, a sage and positive environment in which all students can learn. Uh, the purpose of GES implementing PBIS is in hopes to have, one, fewer behavioral issues, two, more instructional time, three, better attendance for student success. The foundations of PBIS at Grafton lies in four fundamental expectations. We are kind, we are safe, we are community, we preserve. When you visit the school, look for posters and students, uh, that depict these fundamentals. At the last community forum, a parent had asked us about the use of paras in classrooms. The principal explained that all paras at GES are funded through student services at the SU and are assigned to students that are on an IEP, known as an individual educational plan. The superintendent confirmed that across the SU, paras are not provided to classrooms but are assigned to meet students with IEPs. However, they are also able to help other students in the classroom. Deb and Shelley from the SU explained via slideshow why we have various student assessments. They also explained how the data gained from these assessments is used to help tweak classroom teaching goals. Lynn found the presentation very interesting and recommended you view it on Fact TV. At the November fifteenth SU meeting, there was a presentation by Brett Breschup from Focus Schools. This is an organization we've been working with originally on ways to recover from learning due to COVID. We are now working with them on developing leadership teams at the schools and the SU. Again, very interesting presentation, and one Lynn recommends for Fact TV. Again, we really need an Athens person to join the school board, so please let us know if you'd be willing to join. It's a virtual meeting once a month.
Can I add a little thing to the school report?
Yeah.
I just, um, learned last week that some of the elementary school classes have been coming out to the community forest here in Athens, which is, is neat that they've discovered it. And apparently they're gonna try to make four, I think it's seasonal visits, but not every, the school's only whatever month it is. But I think they're gonna try to make four visits, one in each season roughly, to observe what's going on in the forest.
Nice.
Okay. All right, what's in the official? Budget committee's all done. Cemetery commissioner's meeting right now?
Uh, yeah, first Wednesday in December, and it's fifth or sixth, I'm not sure of the date. Um, budget discussion, our, our budget request, uh, will be the main topic of discussion.
Did you find out who was taking your flags?
Nope, no, I don't.
Uh, December sixth, and it'll be six o'clock here, correct?
Yes.
That's what I figured.
That was David's phone.
All right.
That's what I figured.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Sherry, anything else?
Oh, Tim, did you guys?
Tim?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I don't wanna pick up time tonight to go into this, but, um, in conversation with Hannah, um, we agreed that there needs to be a, uh, a meeting with probably you, Don, Hannah, myself. About communications during an emergency. Um, so rather than hash that out, who does what? Um, my concern is that we all, and we, and we've had an, an understanding of this, that, that we stay in communication with one another. I don't feel that's necessarily been, been done. Um, certainly Hannah has had an issue. Certainly Hannah has had an issue also on, on the issue, on the matter of, um, when she gets a call from an agency, who does, who just handles that? Does she handle it? Is it one of us that handles that, uh, or what have you? So I think it would be good for the four of us to get together, um, and, and talk about this and come to, come to an understanding where we all, um, agree as to who does what. But the most important thing is to go back to the understanding that we had a couple of months ago, is that when something is done, it is communicated to all the, uh, the other parties. And I felt that didn't happen in July with our incident down at the Taylor. So, and that's, that's really critical in an emergency, is for all parties to be in, in touch with one another. So there's not duplication, redundancy, um, that we all, you know, are doing the same thing. That was the reason I sent, uh, both Hannah and you, you David, copies of our protocols, the emergency committee, 'cause I think it's important for you to see what we think we're doing.
Yeah.
But if that's not appropriate, or you think, no, then that's why we sit down and talk about it.
Sure, I think that's a good idea.
We're still in a holding pattern on finishing up the project at the, um, the moisture mitigation and, um, work under the floor of the meeting house. And, um, I've been in touch with, um, the Division for Historic Preservation, and she's totally fine on all of that. And the contractors were basically, were on hold with, um, farm insulation for the other work to be done. And I've been in touch with those folks, and they'll be coming when the schedules are allowing it. So that will move ahead when it's able to, and all is good there. We, uh, we did have a, um, uh, request to have a pub, well, uh, I guess it was an outreach meeting or outreach opportunity from Senior Solutions, which we hosted them at the meeting house in October. And in hindsight, I think that it's something that really needs to be, if they wanna come back again, it should be at the community center and not at the meeting house. But, uh, they were coming out to do, um, fuel assistance outreach with folks. And, um, you know, there's no power, there's no anything there, so, uh, it was not the best place. So I directed them to think about the community center next time around, so you may hear that if they.
They've done it here in the office before.
Pardon me?
They've done it here in the office.
Oh, that's curious, and I don't know why they, and, and the gal who came, I don't know if she was new to Senior Solutions or not, but, um, she came from Rattleboro, and she came up Route thirty. So she was a half an hour late getting here. And she had no idea that there was construction going on, I think she had come down from, I don't know, Springfield or wherever. No, she lives in New Hampshire, actually, so she was even less familiar, so anyway, there was all of that. I, uh, I guess for the record, I would just like to, um, clarify a couple of things. At the last meeting that I wasn't able to be at, I know that, um, there was a letter and the, uh, payment had been made, and it was from the Historic Society, funds that had been raised for the various events that we've had over time. So it was not the meeting house committee that paid back the balance on that loan. It was funds from the Historic Society, and I just wanna make sure for the record that that's clear, 'cause in the minutes that I saw from that meeting, it read as if the meeting house committee paid that off. And the meeting house committee doesn't have any money to do that. But in catching up with that meeting, um, and the audio recording of that meeting after, um, executive session ended, and there was some discussion with regards to the letter, because I believe that's when you were doing the mail. I was a bit dismayed by some of what I heard in that discussion, because, um, I felt like a statement was being made about somewhat of a recklessness from the original project that happened back in twenty sixteen, when the, when the loan was made from the Housing Rehab Fund. Um, and I was a bit dismayed to hear the statement suggesting that it was basically recklessly going ahead and spending money that we didn't have. And to not hear David, you in particular, speak up about the fact that I was here and informing the board, and I was talking with you all the way through, so it was not like we were doing that in a vacuum of our own without any regard to that. So it was just a little concerning to me, to hear that discussion.
It wasn't over, uh, overage, but it was all approved, any of the funds that were approved were approved by the select board.
Right, right, so it, I would just like for the record that to be clear, that the meeting house committee was being responsible and keeping the board apprised as to what was going on with that project.
Yes, it, we knew, we knew and we voted on the money going.
Right, and, and it's unfortunate that you didn't acknowledge that in that discussion at the last meeting, so that's the point I wanted to raise. And, and I, I would just ask that any extended discussion that has to do with, whether it's the meeting house committee or any other committee in town, that if the, um, representatives of that committee are not there, maybe hold the conversation until they are. Thanks.
All right, anybody else from boards and officials?
Oh, I'd like to say with the community center, we have another rental coming up on the eighth for a birthday party.
December?
Yes, December eighth. Also, December second, uh, there is going to be a cookie exchange and a children's Christmas gift shop, where the kids can come in, and it's a five dollar limit, but it's only a dollar for each item that they pick. And it's for immediate family members, more or less.
And you're accepting donations for that?
Yes.
What's the date for that?
Tina is. December second for that one.
Oh, are you done, Susan? 'Cause that reminds me, tree lighting on December third, at the meeting house.
December, what day is that?
December third, it's a Sunday.
Sunday.
At five o'clock. And thanks again to Jay and Ginger for a tree.
All right, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, the policy.
David?
Yeah.
Just a quick, I noticed that there, uh, there's no report from the planning commission about whatever they've done so far around the town plan. Is there anything that has been done? Does anyone know?
No, there's, there hasn't been any meetings as of yet.
Has the planning commission met?
No.
I think that it would be a good idea probably for them to meet and to, uh, and to start the process.
Who's leading the?
Well, it's the planning commission, they, they.
It hasn't been reorganized.
Right, but who's?
Well, it's just, I mean.
Janet, get on it.
Janet's on the planning commission, um, but there's some other members.
We, we had a problem with one of the, the members, um, he can't make it only during the day.
Okay.
And I don't know if everybody else can make it during the day, and if anybody would wanna do it during, like, a weekend. So, it's, I know Ivor can't do it during the week.
Yeah, something that's, I thought people, and I, and I think, I refer to the planning, uh, the select board in particular thought was important, has really seemed, has not gotten off the ground by any stretch of the imagination, and I find that, uh, curious. I feel like if, if in fact, a town plan is something that the, the select board, uh, wants to see happen, that the planning commission has to get busy. We had talked about this, uh, and it's been talked about several times, that we lose out on things, including, um, state grants, for example, because we don't have a town plan. And people seem to think that that was important. Maybe they don't, maybe everyone has changed their mind.
I, I haven't changed my mind on it, the board did.
But David, you would agree that it's really weird that nothing is happening.
Wow.
Uh, this, this should be an easy fix, can you send out an email and before the next meeting, just tell us when you'll be meeting after the, after the new year?
And one of the other members, one of the newer members just moved up here a week or two ago.
Great.
For, you know, all time.
Well. I just, I, I also just wanna say that I've been emailing everyone who's been appointed to the planning commission, encouraging them to get organized for the last two mon, I mean, ever since people were appointed. So it, there's, there hasn't been a lot of response at all.
Easy fix, Janet, before the next meeting, can you just tell us a date where you'll be meeting? Great.
Maybe we'll even have a meeting.
Awesome, so if, like, by December twenty first, can you tell us when your first meeting will be? Perfect, there we go.
All right, policy, move on to that, uh, the delinquent tax policy, we have a copy of that here. And anybody that wants to look that over or view that, uh, we will take it up again next month. And if there's no objection or anything with it, or if anybody has an issue with it, we will probably be voting on that next month.
And about the delinquent taxes?
Yes.
Yeah.
We had a policy, but this is just changing a couple of sentences on how to go about. About the policy. And then we have the driveway.
Oh, okay, there's, there's the notice from the, about the signs.
And you're gonna test the taxes now?
Yeah. Pick it right here if I remember. Did everybody get a chance to review the standards for development and home driveways?
No, I don't have a hard copy of it.
I thought you had one.
I don't have a hard copy of it.
You have one, don't you? I have a co, I have a, looking at my phone, just running all fashion.
I have a copy somewhere. And I think this would probably piggyback onto the one that we already have.
Yes.
Yeah.
And this is basically the state standard.
Yeah.
So we will bring that up at the next meeting and probably be voting on that unless there is, uh, unless people have issues with that. They can view both of them.
I have a question with that. Do we know how many, like, requests there have been to add in the, the access roads and the driveways?
Okay, so, but, Danny had one here last meeting, right?
Last meeting.
I'm gonna go ask the one that owned it, dude.
Well, yeah, but.
Two, I think.
Two or, two or three. Uh, I mean, before that, we never knew.
It's hard to follow that policy because of the way it's written, and then nobody actually ever goes and looks at it. You guys just looked at a drawing and signed off on it, it's, you know, I don't know why you guys wanna add more policies when you don't follow the ones you got. You know, it's, when's, when is zoning coming? Seems like you just keep writing the, uh, policies up to benefit, I don't know, it doesn't make any sense. The one that you're trying to propose now, don't even line up with the driveway policy that you have. So it doesn't make sense. You've got, you've got policies that you're gonna adopt that contradict each other before you even approve them. And then if you call somebody, a bell the driveway, you get told, ah, you know what you do, just do it. You know, it's, come on, what, what's the sense of having all these policies when no one can? They don't even, can't even tell you how to fill them out, David. You're looking for, you're looking for a new employee, you're looking for one that's capable of doing the job.
Okay. All right. All right, done.
What is, what's different to this one that you're trying to add to the other one that we don't already have?
Well. We can make copies of this. Somebody, somebody wanna do this? And it can be add here, we gotta, we have this one, if we want.
You got a copy, Larry.
Yeah, I can get.
If somebody wants to make some there, we can hand them out if anybody wants one.
Did anybody want the delinquent tax one?
I'll take one.
Well, that's mine, actually, just make a copy of it if you.
You wanna make a copy of it?
Yeah, grab a copy of it, and then just give that back to me.
Okay.
So next meeting is it gonna be voted on, right?
It will be next meeting.
Can we talk about, where's that twelve percent grade come from? So I know that there's a lot of roads in town that are already higher than that, you know.
It's state, and they actually, they're on the level.
Well, I have a map, I mean, there's a decent amount of them.
Yeah.
So it just seems, that's just what makes me, is the twelve percent. So I just don't, I know it's not retroactive, so I don't know if you have to add in like a grandpa, like, I don't.
No.
No.
I don't know what you do.
No.
But, um, it's basically from state standards.
Yeah, and we all buy state standards. It's just to have policies in place because people will say, you know, what do you do? You follow state standards. Now, the state's saying, you may follow our standards, but you need to have policies.
I have questions. So. You have driveways on here and an access road, so what, what are you qualifying as an access road in this policy? That's different than a driveway. Like, why would, why would a homeowner need an access road and a driveway? Like, if you have a driveway coming off of your road, like Brookline, why would, why would the homeowner be putting in an access road? What's the difference?
The, yes, the access roads are roads that serve six or more houses, health sites, or driveways.
But why would a homeowner be putting?
They want to be a town road, you gotta read the whole thing. You, you, you can read the whole thing and figure out where it's going.
But it doesn't say that the access road is a town road.
So my other question is, is if the town approves this, are you guys as a select board gonna start making an attempt to have some of your town roads show some of this? Because none of your town roads are even close to what you're gonna try to pass.
This is state standards.
Are you gonna try to bring any of your town roads up to the state's standards? Because it says already, when you sign the road agreements, that any time you work in a segment of a town road, you must bring it up to the full standards, which you guys do not do. So are you gonna start following them rules? And that's why I keep saying, you keep passing these policies, but you don't even follow the standards that you guys signed with the state of Vermont, with your road and bridge standards.
When we, when we have a road that is, um, say washed out.
You're working in a segment of that road?
We're working in a segment, and we try to upgrade it to the state's standards at that point. And if we're working on a road, uh, to do that, we try to bring it up to the state's standards. Now, there are certainly town roads that don't meet state standards.
No, but David, you don't understand what I'm saying. It says in the agreement you guys signed with them, you will bring up that segment you're working on to the standards, if you're working on that.
Yeah.
So you got a grant to do work on Brookline Road, which they call Hedgehog down over the hill, the stone lining. That means that segment, you have to bring up fully to the new standards. Anywhere you have worked in this town since you've been signing these, you guys have not done that. Hedgehog would require, require guardrails, there's nothing there. There's a whole list of what hap, is required.
And I know, well, like, the grade though on Hedgehog, that would, they would not want that to be as steep as it is, but you can't change that.
But you, you guys didn't put guardrails in.
We did.
So, you know, they tell, you're gonna make all these policies, but you don't even follow the state's standards that you guys have signed up for already.
But we deal with, um, when regional, when we're doing the stone lining, and work with them on what we need to do and should do, and, um, state highway.
Grants and aid, the rest of it is what you guys are supposed to know, has to be done.
Yeah.
You sign the same thing with FEMA damage. If you, FEMA will pay for that, if you, if you lost Brookline, FEMA would pay to put new guardrails in there, because you signed an agreement with the state saying that you will follow them.
Yes.
But you don't. So when you guys try to slide this stuff across the table as these policies, it's hard for the people out here to do it. If people in this town read that, you won't have any new development in this town. Any. It's ridiculous what you're trying to pass. And then you come and ask you guys a question about it, and you guys don't know the answer. Well, you should understand it all before you take and vote on something.
Other than the Taylor Hill issue, have there been other requests to turn a road into a town road or an, an access road? No?
Not that, not that I have known.
No.
All right.
I just want to say one thing. I know we're trying to like get up to state standards, which just because we're a small town, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be following like appropriate things. But it just, I know a few meetings ago, David, you had mentioned that like after the lawsuit, you want everyone to get along, and I do too.
I would like that.
Believe me, I would too. And it just kind of feels that this is kind of just, since there haven't been other applications, that this feels like kind of just sticking it to them. Especially with all the, the other ones. It just, I'm not saying that's the intent, I'm just saying it just feels that way.
This is to protect the town.
From people doing, requesting that roads become town roads, but if Taylor Hill's the only one that's done that, it just feels like we're sticking it to them.
This is to protect the town.
From what?
In the pu, in the future.
I think we're looking more in the future.
I know, I'm just saying timing wise, it just, it just doesn't feel good when we're moving forward to reconciliation and they're the only one.
Yeah, but we had also thought of, of doing a policy before, and then we stopped and didn't do it because of the issues with Taylor Hill.
Sure, I get it, but if that's been the only one, it just really feels like we're just trying to stick it to them. That just doesn't feel good. And that's just, I'm not saying anyone has any mal-intent, I'm just sharing just how I feel.
I, I'm, I don't think that that's the intent of this at all.
Who wrote up that?
What?
Who wrote that up?
I did.
That explains it right there.
But it's, but hey. Did you get this, did you get this from like state standards, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I, I don't think that that's necessarily called for.
You know, this is, a lot of towns have this. So they, they can do, not have any problems.
And we are trying, because we are trying to meet state standards up on Reed Road, where we've had our landskap, landslide last July. There will be guardrails put up there as required by the state, so we are meeting state standards, and we are trying to meet these things.
How come there wasn't guardrails put on the box core, you know, the Oakes's pond? It's everywhere.
They didn't require us to do it up there.
It's your standards. It's something you have to know. It's not the state coming and running our town.
It's something the state. The state came in and said, we don't need them because we don't. Who knows why?
And there, there are some other places that probably should have, uh, guardrails.
You know, we, we try our best, but we also have limited funds.
But if the state says.
Doesn't mean you don't follow the standards that you some.
No, but if the state says you need this to fit the standards, then we will, we do it.
Do you guys ever read the standards? The state don't tell you what you have to do. You're supposed to know what to do when you guys sign that paper every year.
But if there's a policy put forth before the board, the board acts on it. That is the board and not just one person, so.
And then the policies you put through are greater than what the stand, state's minimums are. Your driveway policy is higher than what the state requires. It makes no sense. And then, then no one goes and looks at it anyway, so I don't know why anybody comes and gets them.
All right, any more discussion on that? We have had the executive discussion, uh, warrants in mail.
I just signed the warrants. You get the warrants.
And, but we will have the other warrant. You will leave that here for us to stop in and sign?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it ended up in the wrong folder. I will put it on the desk.
It's okay.
Tomorrow.
I won't be signing it, just so you know.
You won't?
I'm having surgery tomorrow. I'm not going anywhere for a week or two.
Well, I'll just leave it for a week or whatever.
But you're coming back. You're not going to the hospital.
There's a chance right now, though.
Sure, like policies, like policies.
Do you just wanna sign it at the next select board meeting? Is that all right?
Why don't, why don't we leave it here? The three of us can sign it, and it'll be done.
Yeah, that's all you need is the quorum to sign it, so.
This better roads grant email?
Yeah. That came in today or yesterday.
And you need us to do something.
When do articles have to be in? Cause we have to approve them, right?
The 21st.
By the 21st.
January.
That's when we usually send them. Wait, technically we had it done before then, most of the time. Why, January meeting? You can't see it.
Hannah, do, has anybody offered?
Offered?
Has anybody offered to have naloxone here as a, something you give out?
Nobody's offered.
Would you be opposed to giving it out if people wanted it?
No. I'm only here four hours a week, but.
Only four hours a week? What are we getting out? What's that?
Narcan.
Narcan.
That's what this is about. I mean, it's not, it wouldn't cost us anything if we wanted to give it.
No, I'm totally happy to.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, if it's free, it's not costing us anything, right? Like. They were definitely, they're gonna be. I've seen so many people strung out on the subway. No, but like they're alive, they're.
Do, is there anything that you do with that?
They're just telling you that.
Yeah, I don't think.
So why don't we give that to?
Didn't you order bucks an hour, sixty bucks an hour?
Well, sixty-four.
Yeah.
Uh, give that and this to, uh.
It makes no sense. I went to the. It was so not enlightening.
This is about the shares.
They're, they're trying to come up with some sort of private program where.
We already talked about that. The budget will change. It's only two dollars more an hour than last year, so I don't think we're gonna change the budget. Yeah, we haven't gotten anything recently. For some reason. I think we must have gotten this one big chunk of it early on, because I haven't gotten any recently. We've gotten $2,150 this year, so it's not nothing. But it's happened in recent.
Welcoming in a region communities for, oh, it's for me. I was not suggesting any for to that, but it's Narcan. I was saying that it's good to, like, everybody in town.
It's good to have it in case somebody needs it. There are certainly, you find areas in town where there are extra needles, stuff.
So that's what I was saying, it's good for everybody in town.
It cannot hurt. All right, anything further?
Oh, is that like for the business for the meeting? Okay, I have a cou- couple of questions. First, you made a motion at the beginning of the meeting not to act on any letters that were not signed. The letter that we just read was not signed. Who sent that in?
The letter that Hannah copied.
No, we're saying any letters sent in that have to do with an employee.
So who sent this letter in?
It's from Matt.
From Matthew. How come he didn't sign it?
Cause he wasn't complaining about himself. It's, it's if you want, if the public wants us to take an action on an appointed person or a town employee, then that complaint should be in writing and signed.
That's what your motion was about, right?
Yes.
So.
But any letter that comes.
It was a policy that we, it was a, uh, if not a policy, it was a procedure that we had, uh, several years ago, uh, and, uh.
So to follow up that question, I also heard you make a motion about Sandy writing a letter to show confidence. He didn't sign the letter. Shouldn't he still have to sign the letter even though it's not a complaint about himself? You're going to act on the letter. Shouldn't he sign the letter?
It doesn't change anything.
I mean, obviously we know who wrote it. You guys just told us, but I'm not.
It doesn't change anything.
No.
He was not complaining about an employee. He was not complaining about an appointed official. He was expressing the concern of how he was being treated, and so it really doesn't fall in the same category.
But you're still.
He's not, he's not a member of the public requesting that something be done.
Okay, so moving on to this policy, maybe I'm not understanding this, the road policy.
Which one, the road one?
I just read this, and your access roads policy is the same as your driveway policies on here. So can I get a clarification to why a driveway that serves one to five houses has to be pretty much the same, um, I don't know what you wanna call it, dimensions, whatever, as an access road that serves six or more? It says in here, both have to accommodate a fire truck. Wouldn't a, isn't an access road something that you have to access more than one house to? Whereas a driveway is one house?
Of course, it's not necessarily only one house. There could be one driveway with multiple houses.
Why wouldn't that be classified as an access road?
I think if it's under six.
Because if the, if, so if that was it, the way.
I think if, I think if, what the state says, if it's under six, it's a driveway. If it's over it, it's an access road. And those, I believe, are their definitions.
It's written right on the policy like that.
Yeah, they're the same dimensions.
But they're, they're the exact same thing. It's like copy and paste.
It's not the same numbers though.
It's not the same numbers, but it's the same. It has to, it has to accommodate a tru, fire truck up to 50,000 pounds. It has to have an 18 inch minimum gravel with four inches of press run stone. Same thing down here. It has to have a 12% of, not to exceed a 12% grade. And then the intersection to the driveway, which if it's just a driveway, I'm not understanding why there's an intersection, has to be 18 feet wide for the first 20 feet of the driveway, tapering to 14 feet for an emergency vehicle to turn around. Driveways longer than 500 feet, it's, it's, it's the exact same thing, but you're classifying one as a driveway. And then the driveways have to have a 15 foot by 50 bump out at a halfway point or every 600 feet. That's exactly for the access road. So what's the difference?
I think the differences between the access road and the driveway is how many are on it. If it's over six, if they call it an access road, if it's less than six, it's a driveway.
So what's, what? It does state, it states that driveway serving one to five houses, but then why are the standards the same? They're like just copy and paste it.
Hmm, that's a silly.
Right, you did, Janet didn't type that, that's.
But that's what I'm saying is, can you explain to me why they're exactly the same, but one's a driveway and one's the access road? That would be like, okay, so.
They can't explain it.
If. Like, why, why?
It is not, it is not the standards. If we drew up, forget that. Um, it's especially.
But you want, but you wanna vote on this policy and put it in, and if somebody comes in and has the same question, how are you gonna explain to them? Well, no, I have this, but you're telling me.
I have one house, but he's.
But I have all of this. Like, but this person has, you know, four houses, and I still have to have the same as the person that only has one house. I mean, how are you gonna explain that, other than the state says I need to?
Those are the standards that the state has told us to have?
But also there hasn't been request, so I don't actually think that it's gonna be.
But you're putting in a policy in case there is a.
It's not, I hear you, I know. That nobody understands, and nobody can explain.
That nobody understands and can explain to me. This would be like saying Buxton Circle, who has three houses on it, is a driveway, not an access road, and has to have the same as the access road.
No, this is not saying that Buxton Circle has to, but if somebody made a new.
That's what I'm saying. If you, if I put in a driveway, like Buxton Circle, I have to ha, I'm now only gonna have one to five houses on it, I still have to have the same standards as somebody that's putting in a housing development in this town. That makes no sense to me, and nobody can explain it to me.
They don't care.
Apparently not.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but.
But you, but I just want you to say, I just want you to know that you are gonna be voting on this next month. And you are standing behind this next month, but you cannot explain to a person that may want to build a house in this town, why it's different and why I have to go through the same amount as a housing developer that is gonna make hundreds of thousands of dollars off a development to put in one single house in Athens.
It's because it's, it's what the state requires, and it's a state issue.
The state does not require it. You don't even have a town.
The select board can make their own policies.
Yeah, we can, we can require, I mean, the state doesn't tell us that we have to require, but they recommend us to do that.
So you, so you're saying you, you stand behind this because you're all gonna vote on this next month.
But because the state recommends that we do that and have that, those standards.
I have a question.
But do you, but by, by voting yes on this, you're saying that you agree with this, that you're not gonna come up with your own policy?
We have gone.
Because this is what the state says that you should have.
So this is just the policy. The state has nothing to do with it once you accept it. So I wanna know, where's the letter, or where was the meeting where the state says that you need to have this?
This is all done on research.
So the state hasn't told you to do this?
It's in the state's standards.
The state has not said that we have to do this, no.
So you make it sound like the state's telling you to do this. This is solely a select board member looking at the state's standards and saying, hey, town of Athens should have this. Am I correct? So there's no meat nor minutes or anything?
It would protect the future of Athens.
You can't even get a town playing, never mind get a policy.
No, no, I wanna get, what's it protecting us from if there's been one road request? From any other. So this is to prevent people from requesting a, a wall it over.
Well, it's not to prevent people, but it's. It's, I don't think it's to prevent anybody from doing anything, but if they do it, they're supposed to do it to these standards. It's not to say, oop, we can't do this. It's just saying you need to do it like that.
This is a town policy, not a state policy. This is something the town is looking to approve. You can write your own policies up. The state does not enforce anything to do with policies that the town accepts. This is just something you can.
That, that's true. That's true.
So if you can't explain a policy that they're, you're presenting from them, why would you accept it? If you don't understand it yourself.
But the standards as to how wide this, to be and what the, the gravel and things are is because what was put through by the state, so.
You just like, you just passed a driveway policy. So now you're gonna get rid of that. Where did that policy come from?
It will, it will, this will not supersede the driveway policy.
You've got two different, you've got two driveway policies that we passed this. It says one, two, five houses. So you got, you're duplicating again.
No, but it's not superseding. What does supersede the other policy?
So which one would you follow? That's why I don't, you know, you guys wanna pass the policies, but you're overlaying policy on top of one another that don't even line up with each other. It's obvious what the purpose is.
All right, anybody else for further questions?
Yeah, when am I gonna get my answer? I'm ditching for my house in the lead. I ain't heard an answer. Yeah, have you? It isn't a town call.
Seems like it depends who you are and where you live in this town, it happens.
They take that, they take that big grating, they go across my lawn and hit my. They take that, they take that big grader, they go across my lawn and hit my trees, and they can't get around, around with that big grader. Then you get by her house, knock, knock, knock her little fences down. How do they do that, David? It's the same grader. Her fence is a rock mile long and white tree. How are they missing it?
So what are you wanting done to do that?
I asked for a letter to have somebody come and suck the leaves out of her gardens. And I haven't heard that answer yet.
When you drive around town and you see that roads, certain roads don't get maintained, and then you're building pull offs for other private-
That everybody's picking on him. What about me? He's done it all summer.
If you write a letter and you sign it-
David talked to him one day, and the next day he's had it again. You tell me what you want to do. You come see me, David. I'm done.
Why is the town building pull offs on private property? You brought up a covert saying it's on private property. Why did the town build a pull off for a private homeowner in this town by Oaks' Pond? You guys have a driveway policy that states what has to be done in the town, dumped material up there for a parking lot in the town right away. How, how, that's, how do you follow anything you guys suggest? When it depends who you are. And David, I'm not trying to be rude or nasty, but you just look at us, but we never get any answer. Everybody says that we're just targeting people. Leading that letter tonight, it's obvious who he's targeting. And then you say we have to sign our name to any complaints about an employee in this town. I did that. I brought a letter in here and handed it directly to you guys, and not one of you acted on any of the questions presented in that letter.
When was that?
So what's good?
When was that?
When was that? Because I don't-
Last year.
Last year?
When I was accused of different letters being just mailed in here. I brought my own in and handed it in right here at a meeting.
I do not remember that letter.
There's a lot of things that happened, and there's no minutes of it. When was, where in the minutes when Ivor was hired to do the winter stuff? Where's that? I just heard that tonight that he was hired to do that. I know he's helped in the past. Where's the minutes for that? Who, who agreed to that? You want us to follow policies that you guys are writing, but you don't even follow the rules from the state, the handbook. If I'm wrong, you know, please tell me.
I don't want to argue with you, Danny.
We never get answers though, David.
I think as far as Ivor was concerned, we were trying to cover the winter months with the hopes that Eugene was coming back to work.
I, I agree, but where was the minutes of that?
It wa, it was a discussion between the road foreman and the road commissioners.
No, I wasn't part of that.
No, you weren't part of it.
The commissioner's the whole select board, so there's supposed to be minutes?
Yeah, well, we did have a meeting. We did not have a meeting.
It wasn't a proper meeting. We didn't have minutes.
But now, so-
There you go. Once again.
About that, so now, wow, no, it wasn't, it wasn't a, a meeting.
It wasn't a meeting per se.
You made the decision to hire somebody.
No, 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 because he was already hired. He already works, he got contracts with the town and works for the, and has worked for the town. And that's the reason that we did it.
So, doing grants and aid where it's stone lining, that, it's just covered. We go to one person, and we don't have to have a meeting. Our road foreman can just hire that one person to do it. How come Ivor just didn't do the grant work on Reed Road then? So you just all contracted up?
It was done because our employee was out and had cancer and was trying to come back and did come back for some periods of time, and then couldn't do it, and we had things we had to do in the meantime, so.
It seems like there's a lot of meetings behind closed doors that-
So who said, who acts as the road, so you said that he, the road foreman? My understanding is that the road foreman is able to make like decisions, like he needs help, right? Like he, he can hire people, right?
He needs help. He, he-
So then does he just call Sandy or David? Like, I don't, I don't understand how we as the road commissioner works, because I wasn't part of that. So is he just called David?
Well, we would vote as a select board.
But I wasn't part of that, so you can leave-
Yeah, we, no, I mean, we didn't vote, but we needed help.
Yeah, I know, that's not, I don't have a problem with that.
It was considered more of an emergency situation and hoping to-
Come on. Emergency to do stone lining?
What's stone lining?
That they did out on the other end of town? That there's no minutes on hiring Ivor for that. Winter was not even here when you agreed to this, so don't say it's an emergency.
About Sam Fire Road.
Sam Fire Road?
Yeah.
You guys just make the stories up as it goes. You know, you, you guys, you guys brought it out yourself in the state you made at the last meeting, but now we're talking about a bunch more, that one person agreed to hiring somebody on their own, and that is not legit with a five board member. It is a vote. This has happened many times, and you guys keep saying you want to follow the rules, but it keeps happening.
Does the road foreman need our permission to, to make those decisions?
Well, it was, he needed somebody. He, I, I'm not sure who he talked to, but he had some people from Ivor's do it. We brought it up at the next meeting, and I don't know that we made a motion on that, but it was, we discussed it all at the next meeting, is my understanding. And it was on, it was only when Eugene was sick, and he, he left, and then he came back, and but in the meantime, they, and it was to finish a thing that he had to do, so. And we have contracts with Ivor. We don't have to fill out the paperwork. We didn't have to do that. And then we brought it up at the next meeting, that that was what happened, and I don't know that we made a motion. This is what we will do going forward.
Can we make the motion right now? Clear it up?
You have policies on dollar amounts. That's what goes out to bed, so you can't just tie it in a contract.
It, it's not just a, it's not, we're just, it's not his equipment that we are, are doing. It is somebody to assist him when he needed a second person, so. It wasn't to say, it was-
You just hired all his equipment, David.
But we're not hiring Ivor specifically, because that was the issue with Dylan and the truck, was that we're hiring his, his company essentially. Because if Dylan could drive the truck, because he's one of Ivor's employees, and we're not hiring Ivor, we're hiring his company, which is fine. There's just a distinction there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it wasn't to hire Ivor. It was to hire who other Ivor could spare at the time.
And hopefully, you guys will hire somebody soon, and this will be cleared up and not happen again.
Yeah, it was to hire an extra body to help do the work.
And not to work full-time. It was just when it was needed.
Yeah.
A few hours here or there.
I think going forward, everything needs to be put out there equally to everybody.
No, I, I, we're not, we're not saying that. I mean, this was a situation where our employee was ill.
Which is why the work on Reed Road is being done by Mark.
Because that was put out to bed.
Right.
Alright, anything else? Any further business?
I make a motion to be adjourned.
I say again.